Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. Our meeting Monday, March 24th. Tonight, we're going to meet in three sets of committees. And they could be relatively long committee meetings and some might be shorter. So we're going to begin with Finance and Personnel Committees led by Christine.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three agenda items listed tonight. The first one being a presentation by the Community Food Initiatives Executive Director, Mary Nally. Council members were provided a copy of Ms. Nally's annual report from the Community Food Initiatives that outlines the many accomplishments during the year. And we'll hear about more, a little bit about that and about the goals for the coming year. Thank you. You want to go up to the podium?
I printed it.
Okay. Thanks so much for having me. So I wanted to begin just by kind of going over how we are framing the mission of Community Food Initiatives in really meeting the needs of food access and healthy food in the community, both by looking at ensuring that everyone has equal access to fresh local food in terms of immediate need with our donation station program, as well as long-term need through our community and school gardens. And reminding you that each of our program areas has an educational component, so we're doing more than just providing space for people to garden, but really making sure that they feel confident in their abilities to learn how to grow food, understand where their food comes from, and know what to do with it when it's harvest time. As I'm sure you're all aware, the donation station has been growing very significantly. In 2013, we expanded to not only be at the Athens Farmers Market for every market, but also at the Chester Hill Produce Auction throughout the season, May through the end of October. We saw significant increase in our food donations from that and are hoping to expand our services into Morgan and Washington County a bit through our relationships with those farmers. In 2013, we spent over $11,000 in the local food economy distributing 51,457,000 pounds of food. If you remember, in 2012, it was around 44,000 pounds. So we've had a really nice uptick there and we're anticipating more this year. And we've also increased the number of food pantries and agencies that we're serving now to 40. So we serve over a dozen food pantries in Athens County, one in, excuse me, in Morgan County that serves the Trimble Township area in Bishopville. But we also serve agencies such as Children's Services, My Sister's Place, Good Works. Hope Well Health Center is now coming to us. A lot of the schools through the AmeriCorps/Comcor Program. We collaborate with the AmeriCorps members that are working with the school nurses and school social workers. They take food and identify which children might be food insecure at home or struggling and send that food home with them. So we're very pleased with that. Another thing that was different or unique in 2013 is that local farmers and individuals realized that they could call us when their bounty was maybe too great for them to handle or when they saw an opportunity to give. So we wound up doing harvesting and gleaning projects, and this was a great opportunity for volunteers. And that wound up being 8% of all of the food that we were able to distribute last year. And that's without even trying. So that kind of leads me, well, wait a second here, I'll get back to that. The Discovery Kitchen is a new program that goes along with the donation station where we are hoping to increase people's confidence in using seasonal ingredients and cooking from scratch. So we piloted the program last year at different agencies and food pantries that are distributing donation station food and reached 167 individuals. Actually, today, we are at the gathering place. On Thursday, we're going to be at the free meal at the United Campus Ministry. So these are hour-long classes where we talk about how what we eat impacts our health. We have a hands-on cooking demonstration. Everyone gets a sample and a recipe. And we're really trying to coincide this with whatever's in season. So, you know, when they're receiving the produce from the donation station, they'll recognize it from the class and have greater confidence in being able to do so. So our goals for this year is that we are going to go for 55,000 pounds of food distributed to our agencies. And I'm already telling my staff that we will surpass that because I like to push them, even though it's only March still. And I'm really interested in increasing harvesting and gleaning projects. A lot of our volunteers were really excited by this. Our local farms were really thrilled. So, and individuals with apple trees in their backyards were also very pleased. So we'll be pushing that program more. And as I'm sure you may have also heard that I've been working, CFI has been working with the Sisters of St. Joseph Charitable Foundation in Parkersburg, West Virginia, to help us fund replication of the donation station and Discovery Kitchen projects in other southeastern Ohio and Appalachian communities. We really feel like this is a great opportunity, both to be channeling money into local food economies, like the $11,000 that we spent, but also be addressing food insecurity issues in other communities. This will also help create a potential social enterprise revenue stream for CFI so that we won't be as grant-dependent in the future. With our community garden programs, we had over 243 people attend 34 workshops. These are the workshops where we cover all different kinds of organic gardening topics, as well as food preparation and preservation. In this picture, Ruth Dudding from the Health Department, she's our local health educator, is demonstrating healthy cooking for the holidays using seasonal ingredients. That's turned into one of our most popular and probably most delicious workshops. I recommend it. And we also now have six community gardens with a new one put in last year at Carriage Hill on the south side. All of our gardens are now equipped with tools and tool sheds, easy water access, and we're organizing monthly work parties with volunteers to help make sure that the gardeners don't feel overwhelmed. And it also gives us an opportunity to interact with the gardeners and for them to get to know each other. The Yak Kids program, as you may have heard, had record profits last year, over $1,300 being split amongst eight participants. It was really an incredible year, and they're already planning their garden. So we're very thrilled about the strength of this program and really hope to figure out ways to expand it in the future. Our goals for the community gardens in 2014, as you may have heard, we are going to be building fences, both at the East Side Community Garden and South Side Carriage Hill with the support of the apartment manager. They have funding there to assist us in that fence. And at the east side, we have both individual contributions and some other funding set aside that we're going to put into that. Also at the east side, as you may know, we had a lot of flooding last year with all the excessive rains. And so we'll be working with the city to put in some French drains and swales to hopefully have better drainage to manage that garden a little bit better. At Chansey, this community garden is used predominantly with the school librarian or the, excuse me, the children's librarian. And so we're going to be using more perennial herbs and edible flowers there, more things that the children will be interested in interacting with, as well as the vegetables. We're working with Hocking Athens Perry County Community Action to rebuild the raised beds at Gloucester. They use this garden predominantly with their Learn and Work Program. So we're doing a lot more collaborations with the agencies that are hosting these gardens. At Nelsonville, we're working hard. We have a lot of Johnson grass in Nelsonville, which is a very obnoxious weed. So we're going to be trying some different experiments up there to see what we can do. And with Hope Drive, we'll be increasing patio gardening amongst the adults. And the Yak Kids have been approached by Casa Nuueva to grow hot peppers specifically to sell to Casa for some of their seasonal products. So we're very excited about that. We've got some heirloom varieties that are already growing. We're doing a lot more with Seed Sovereignty. We have a kind of a peer support group that's formed to help make sure that the seed savers that are listed in our annual inventory have good viability so that things are what we're expecting them to be when we plant those seeds and increasing the amount of people that are participating in this. Seed sovereignty is really critical in that we have the ability to better control our food sources and to develop varieties that are well-adapted to both our climate, our pests, and other factors that can help increase yields and things of that nature. And we have a lot of people in this community that are doing this, so I'm excited that they're working more together. And they're really interested in potentially doing a seed bank or starting their own seed company, kind of a cooperative thing. So that's still just in discussions, nothing is permanent yet. And our Community Orchard Advisory Committee, formed in 2013, these are all volunteers that have either a passion or quite a bit of knowledge on fruit and nut trees. And they are volunteering their time to help advise the Community Food Initiatives staff and board on how to manage or offer support for fruit and nut trees that are, at this point, really just in the, we also have some plantings outside of Athens. We have developed a strategic plan that I can send to all of you. The mayor has seen it, Ron Lucas, that details what CFI is offering to be responsible for in terms of maintenance of the trees, in terms of any pruning that needs to be done, fencing for the first three years. And we will also be coordinating harvesting support, either, you know, letting the community know when the apple trees are in season, for example, and also providing a volunteer opportunity to collect those apples and then distribute them through the donation station to people in need. An Ohio University student received a grant to plant 20 new trees this year in the city. And CFI staff, Rich Campatelli, Ron Lucas, and Paul Logue will all be going out to a couple of different locations in the next couple of weeks to look at where there might be opportunities for that. We've already identified a few in conversation, and we'll see where that goes. We don't have to plant all 20. There's just funding for 20. This grant was written, and then they brought it to me, so I had nothing to do with it. I'm just trying to make sure we have a good plan for taking care of the trees. And we're also updating our online map so that we know where all these trees are and know which ones we're responsible for maintaining. I want to approach the community orchards as slowly and cautiously as possible. So our seed giveaways in 2013, we distributed 21,000 pounds of seed potatoes in less than 24 hours, over 2,000 packets of seed and 500 plant starts. And my staff are really excited about giving away more this year. So it's actually a week from today, next Monday from noon until 6:00, we'll be distributing over 30,000 pounds of seed potatoes. And these don't go just to Athens County, but people come from all over the region to get these. If all of these seed potatoes are planted, that'll be over 300,000 pounds of potatoes for our community. And we do that in collaboration with Jackson Area Ministries down in Jackson County. We'll also be doing an expanded seed giveaway where we will take two weeks around Earth Day at 10 different locations throughout the county, so we're really trying to reach all corners. And then we'll probably have around 1,000 or more plant starts in mid-May, right around the last frost date that we will also be distributing. So we're really trying to equip people to grow food, and now's a good time to do it. Our school garden program is now full-time. We have a dedicated AmeriCorps/Comcor member who is working with four out of the five school districts. Nelsonville hasn't contacted us yet, but they do have a school garden, and it's going well. What we're doing is just offering resources and support for existing school gardens and for any school garden that, any school that wants to start one, we offer consultation and assistance in helping them find resources, whether that's good soil, how to raise, excuse me, how to build a raised bed. And we're also working with them to do a lot of season extension. We also can go into the classrooms and offer to teach lessons for the teachers. If you know any teachers, they already have a very challenging job, and with new testing standards, it's a lot more work to ask them to go out and take their whole class to the garden with them. So we're offering to do that for them to make it a little easier, and it's a lot of fun for the kids. These are some kindergartners out in Coolville. In 2014, we'll continue to have school garden roundtables, and we're really going to keep inviting Nelsonville into the circle. We're also expanding to other youth-oriented gardens. So this year, we've already been working with Children's Services, but Hope Well's Reach Program has reached out to us, and they're interested in creating a garden for the young people that they're working with. And we also work with HVACRC. So we're really trying to just find out where the kids are and if those agencies are interested. So we're excited about that. And we'll also be offering a teacher training on season extension and garden planning. And we're intending to offer continuing education units to those teachers as an incentive and hopefully also working with Green Edge Garden to help us as facilitators, since they've been doing a lot of educational workshops there. Our membership, I don't think anything here has changed. This might just be a stock slide in here. But I did want to point out that, if it wasn't true last year, that the CFI membership does include options for a community garden plot. And if someone approaches us as wanting to be a community gardener but does not have the financial ability to pay for a membership, we do waive that fee, no questions asked. So we're really trying to make sure that this is accessible to everyone. Funding from the city of Athens in 2014, CFI has requested $6,000. 1,000 of that is match funding to help pay for the east side community garden fence, and the remainder is shared between each program area to help us cover the costs of our AmeriCorps service members. We are still a very small organization, even though we do a lot. And our AmeriCorps service members really are the feet on the ground doing the work. And so the more support we can give them in being able to do that, the better. And really, I just wanted to kind of summarize what we're doing by talking about that this is a lot more than just managing community gardens. To me, community food initiatives is really about building community resilience and addressing our social issues and our sense of place through an asset-based lens. So, you know, really looking at how our local food solutions can be the same solutions to our socioeconomic issues in terms of helping support the food economy, as I was saying, by funneling financial donations to purchase donation station food. That really creates meaningful jobs and helps support our local farmers. It's about access and empowerment to, you know, have these free seed giveaways so that families can grow their own food for their families and share their extra with their neighbors is a really great feeling. And to ensure that we're not just giving things away, but that people have the knowledge of knowing what to do with it. And I'm really excited that we're doing more with the school gardens around the county. And lastly, I think it's really about engagement, that we are community food initiatives. This isn't just me standing up here, it's not just my staff that are working, but that this really is about everyone finding a niche or a role in what we're doing and redefining our sense of place through that. So, thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mary. We'll turn it over to council members for questions and comments.
Yes, Jen.
You suggested $6,000?
Yes. Yeah, I can go back to that slide.
This coming season, do you remember what we did last year?
It was...
I think it was six as well.
I think it was six as well.
The same, okay.
Yeah. I think the previous year was five, I believe. I know one year, we bumped it up many years ago to 10 or 15, I think, at one point. That was for some other activity as well.
Because it was another part?
Yeah.
Another jump up in the program. Okay.
But no, yeah, this is the same as last year, as 2013.
I budgeted for it for this year in budget.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for all the programming that's going on. It really is community-based, and I can remember being slightly skeptical last year when you set goals of, I think you said you were going to increase the number of gardeners by 30%.
Yeah.
It's like, I looked at the numbers.
And you did it.
You more than did that. So congratulations on that and the many other ventures. And certainly, starting out with the schools and empowering students to be doing things and earning money and learning about the food is critical.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that. I've gone up to, as you know, up to Trimble and looked at the school garden up there, the Carriage Hill Garden, the Hope Garden. The thing that's so impressive to me, and I'm proud of CFI and you for doing this, is that the educational component to students, to kids, to everybody, to look at the amount of money that the Hope Garden made last year, you know, over $1,300 last year. I'm still hoping maybe there can be a rival on the other side, on the south side of the city with Carriage Hill, and it'll be called Yak or something like that. But to get some, you know, some friendly youth entrepreneurs out there growing. But it's amazing. Everything that CFI has done is, to me, is just, I'm in awe.
Thank you. It's great to look up at the city council and know so many of you as community gardeners or people who volunteer regularly with us, so.
Councilwoman Reisner.
Do you do any tracking to see how successful the giveaway seeds and potato program is working? I mean, you give away 30,000 pounds of potatoes. Do you have any idea what is being produced out there? I mean, one potato should produce 12, so theoretically, there should be, I don't know, 240,000 pounds of potatoes lying out there somewhere. Is there?
Right. So only anecdotally at this point, because we have so many people coming through and very limited capacity. We have invited this year everyone who came last year. So I'm sure that we'll hear some stories on Monday as we follow up with people, but at this point, we don't have a formalized follow-up system for the seed giveaways.
It sounds like that might be something useful.
Absolutely.
Not just as a function of being of an auditor, but just, you know, who's doing what?
Right.
Who are your best people doing that? You know, I'm one of those pathetic people who will go to White's Mill, and I see the seeds all out, you know, in April. I go, oh, well, I need, and I walk up and I have about 30 pounds of seeds, and I'm going, now what do I do with all these? So there's, I have great, I have good intentions, okay? My follow-through sometimes is much to be desired. So I'm just wondering, how do you account for that in what you're doing? How do you find the people who follow through on this, you know, take the stuff, plant it and produce it?
Right. I mean, I do think that it would be interesting to track how many pounds of, for the seed potato giveaway, for example, you know, how many of those do make it into the ground and, you know, how viable are they? How many potatoes are coming back? I don't think that that would necessarily change the intent of our programs very much because I wouldn't want to turn someone away because they had a bad track record of getting their potatoes in the ground. Because I actually myself am a miserable gardener.
I have a hard time believing that.
You're a good director.
I've had, thank you.
Everybody has skills in different areas.
I just work too much in the summer. I don't do a good job of taking care of my garden.
Councilmember Butler, do you have another comment?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate your presentation. It was nice to see it again. There was a few things I caught this evening that I didn't witness or didn't resonate with my head at the annual dinner that I was in attendance. But I appreciate your discussion about building community resilience. I think that's terribly important. I feel that with climate change, we're only one disaster away from calamity and potential problems. And so I applaud your efforts to help us as a community prepare and to be forward-thinking. Likewise, I definitely applaud the Community Orchard Initiative and would love to maybe see the city and university as well with your organization continue to collaborate potentially and progress forward in that direction. Again, I appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for coming to present to us tonight and sharing it with the community.
Yeah, thanks again for having me.
Our next agenda item has to do with State Issue One, and Mayor Wile has brought this to our attention, that the State of Ohio Public Works Commission will be going through their authorization for the Issue One monies. Folks may recall that some of our projects, which Member Wile, or, excuse me, Mayor Wile has provided for us, that they've been responsible for funding at the Carpenter Street Improvements, Columbus Road, East Union Jeff Hill, East State Street paving, the East State Street project, the Elliott Road rebuild, the middle school area paving. And these grant monies for the city of Athens have totaled approximately, just from my quick calculation here, about $2.8 million over the years. Other projects have been provided to the Village of Amesville, the Village of Albany. And I believe, Mayor, that your request here is that we issue a resolution.
Resolution of support. Essentially, this probably is going to pass. If I'm looking at, I gave you a packet just, I gave you a packet last week, I just gave you another one. It includes, I went to the Secretary of State's website to look at the Issue One, which is what it's going to be, including an explanation, proposed amendment. And again, this is going to be a 10-year bond where the first, let's see, not to go over 1.875 billion over 10-year periods, with no more than 175 million for the first five years and 200 million for the next. This is distributed for our various public works projects. As you say, I gave you also this form right here for this. Actually, if you look at the synopsis at the second page, it's closer to the total assisted amount is about 3.6 million.
Oh, yes.
Am I being correct?
Thank you.
This is actually all the Athens County Public Works there. We're on, starting up round number 29 right now. This is on the May ballot, which is why I wanted to bring it up because May, the primary ballot will not be, it depends on what's in the running, of course, will be either well-voted on or a lot of polling or not. Essentially, again, it just puts the bond throughout to fund our public works infrastructure. It's usually done in conjunction with the, what is the LTIP, which is Local Transportation Improvement Project money as well. This is administered by District 18, which is the Buckeye Hills, Hocking Valley Development District. They do a scoring of it. Our Public Works Director, Andy Stone, has been very good at making sure the numbers work out. If you'll notice, they all usually hover around 400,000 because that's usually where you get the best bang for the scoring, I believe, as well as leverage other funds. So we use this as a, help us out in terms of our big projects. And again, there's, I don't know how hard it will be to pass. If you looked at this packet I gave you, in fact, they also gave you the for and against issues. And if you look at it, the against issue is prepared by the Ohio Ballot Board and apps of any submission and opposition. So they had to put that together themselves. So I'm not terribly worried about it, but I do want to make sure that the publicity's out there as well as the support. And if you have any questions, I can answer them. But I say, you have pretty much all the pieces of information I have here, as well as a copy of a resolution template.
Thank you for gathering the information for us, and it's been a significant amount of support for our infrastructure projects. It probably wouldn't have been possible to the scale that we've been able to achieve them here, so it's very important.
And this year is West Junior.
Big one coming up. Okay, well, we're sensing consensus from council members that it's important for us to support that with a resolution, so we'll bring that forward next week.
Okay.
The next item that I have is, and the initial discussion, this has been mentioned once before, and this is for a sub, a request for subordination of loan, that it was provided by the city towards the down payment of a home that was purchased, and that down payment money that the city provided was through our CHIP program. And because of the regulations with how that is funded in part by grant money from the city, and what happens is each year as the loan is paid off, then progressively the amount that is the city's portion decreases, much like a mortgage would. When a person goes to refinance, as I'm understanding the process, because of the fact that they had grant money through the city to pay towards the down payment on it, they need to come to us for what's called the subordination of the loan. That's part of the process. There are certain requirements that, guidelines that council has followed in the past. This is not the first time that persons have requested this. Other persons who have received CHIP money through the city have requested the subordination process. And if I'm understanding it right, the subordination process then puts us in line, should something happen, we would, it subordinates our position so that we would be in a lesser position in terms of payback on the money. So we are in, we have information on the amount of the loan that would be sought, and that would be approximately $34,000. And I am bringing it to council tonight as a consideration for our finance committee, but do also want to let you know that Law Director's Office will be having further information for us on the next steps for what we're, you know, allowed to do or within, is reasonable within our guidelines.
Let me, let me add a few things. In the past, when we've done a subordination, and it's been done probably about every two or three years, usually for refinance or change of title due to, you know, change of circumstance, there's two criteria that are required through council. One is appraisal of the property, which was done by the property owner. This is on, at Eden Place, 35 Eden Place. The other one is that it, the other requirement we've always put in forward, and again, it's not really, I've tried looking at it as a policy or guideline, it says nothing really written, except we've always put it, put forward in one of the whereas is that the loan, the combined loans or refinance be no more than 80% of the appraised value. That has not happened here. It's to the value of the property. So therefore, I'm a little bit leery of it. I sat on this for about a month, just for that reason, but I realize I'm not the gatekeeper in this, you guys are. With that in mind, again, I put it forward to you. I would say if you have any questions, contact the property owner. I can give you her name and address. If not, she'll seek you out if you have any questions. Just voice them at this point. As I say, I sat on it a little bit longer than I should, which is because I was uncomfortable with it, but the fact is, the point of the CHIP grants and the CBG grant is to keep people in their homes. In this case, she wants to do some consolidation of debt, and she wants to pull up some money back into the house in terms of upgrades and upping, like any house, you know what that means. So that's why I'm bringing it forward to you. Again, from my point of view, the 80% is not a hard and fast problem, but a rule, but again, I know how I feel about these things, but at the same time, it's not for me to stop it here. It's for you guys to make a decision. I believe you talked to, Jennifer has already met with her at least at one point or another, and knows the circumstance or at least the conversation. If you have the same questions, do so. I'd also say, because I sat on it so long, I would ask if you do decide to move forward with this, is to spend rules either first or second reading. I'd also say we should bring in Pat Lang for evaluation on it as well, just because as far as I know, there's nothing in the CBG that requires us to have this 80% value. But I don't, I, from what I could find, I did a lot of searching, I looked for the policy in the council, but again, I don't see anything that says we have to do this. It's as, as the pirates say, it's more like guidelines. So, any questions?
Councilwoman Reisner.
What would be the impact if council said, well, we're going to stick with 80%?
Probably two possibilities. One, the, the additional loan would probably not go to the full amount. I don't know, possibly they wouldn't, not be able to stay in the house. Those were the two possibilities I discussed with her. I mean, there's, you know, what happens when you're given a situation, you make that decision. And, you know, that's, and again, we're on year, I think if we give a loan, we're on year four of the 10 years, so there's been a reduction over time.
But it's good to know the ramification of a decision one way or the other.
And I think it will be helpful when the Law Director's Office weighs in and gives us...
I will pass the information to him.
I appreciate that.
But again, I just want to make sure that you, it's moving forward at some level, either yea or nay, and just not through my office.
I need a clarification, so four years into the payment?
The forgivable loan, I think, let me see, just have the numbers correctly. The reduction will be, it will be at 70% of the loan in May 14th to 2014, so it's coming up for the fourth round reduction. Does that make sense? It's a forgivable loan. You lose it a certain percent of every year, you're forgiven that. So in 10 years, there won't be any loan whatsoever.
Got it.
Provided they stay in the house. We have had occasions where somebody sells the house and has to pay the difference. We've had people, as I say, refinance, name changes in terms of deed changes. I could probably give you probably about a copy of three or four of these that we've done over the past 10 years.
But what you were saying is you've never gone over 80%. That's kind of...
True. And I don't...
Historically, historically.
Historically, I have never seen that, but I haven't, I didn't, the policy, again, if you look at policy and guidelines, it's in the two-page that you have for services outside the city limits, both for sewer and water. I forget, there's a third, another item there, as well as a subordination of the loan, and really just references a ordinance from 1989, I believe. And therefore, so I went back to 1989 ordinance, and there's water extension, sewer extension, revocable license, and subordination, and that was from 00798. And if you look at that, there's no real dialogue of why that policy is put in place. For all I know, there were earlier subordinations that did not track. Again, my history goes back to 92, but I really didn't pay attention to this type of stuff at that time. I was more concerned about probably neighborhood things.
What happens to the property if they weren't able to keep up?
Probably a foreclosure, I imagine. I don't know. It depends on how they structure these things, you know, what's going on exactly. I mean, they're all different. I did not go to that, that level dialogue.
Councilmember Butler. I'd like to just ask a clarifying question as well, because it's my understanding this is not going to cost the city anything. Is that correct?
It will not cost us anything, but we, in theory, if, if somebody fore, you know, basically did not make their mortgage, did not make their payments, we would be in line for the, for some of the money back. Whether we're liable for it or not, that's a good question. I don't think, I don't know if we are, because it's a grant, but the fact is, we'd probably strike against this for our next round of CHIPS.
So it really is important how we handle this, because it also affects further things down the line when it comes to probably grant applications.
What?
We should probably get that clarify, because we have to see the intensity of the contract to be for whether or not it would happen in the first step, or perhaps it ties it up. There's another one, you know, but then, that's the point of the program is to assist the...
Right, so it's a balancing, right, of our risks, but also wanting to remain true to the purpose of the program, to help with low and moderate income housing. Yes, President Sands?
Ms. Cochran sounded as though you had talked to the person.
Yes, this resident is a neighbor and friend of mine, so...
And the mayor said that there was some indication of putting some money back into the house. Do you know what those improvements might?
I don't know the specifics of her plans for...
He said windows.
For the house, but...
I'm sorry?
Windows.
Windows.
She's done a good bit of improving since she purchased the property. I remember seeing the property when we moved into our home on Charles Street. She's just a few streets down from us, and the property was an eyesore before she bought the house and began some improvements on the house. So she has markedly improved the value of that property, I believe, and, you know, I believe her to be a very responsible community member. She's involved in, you know, community activities, and I think, you know, if we were able to look at her track record, it would show that she has not missed any payments or been delinquent in her payments, and that, you know, she's, she's a good risk.
And again, the point of the CBG CHIP money is to put people in homes. You know, I'd rather see a home with somebody who's, you know, doing something like this rather than an empty one. I don't know the house offhand one way or the other, but I know we have some, quite a few empty houses there that, not as bad as some other cities, but some houses that really, you know, they, they need occupancy and tender loving care. And again, if anybody wants her to talk to you, just, you know, raise your hand or give her a call and a shout-out, and she'll be there for you. She'll talk to you. Again, I prefer the one-on-one, because then you can actually ask those questions rather than generic out.
Right.
Okay?
Well, thank you for the information and the questions, and then we'll, as I understand, we'll wait to hear back from the Law Director and then also from HAPCAP regarding any other requirements or guidelines that they may have regarding the grant program.
We'll try getting that before next Monday.
Okay, thank you. And if there are any other miscellaneous items?
Is that it?
That's it.
Yes.
Finance and personnel?
Okay, no problem.
None? Okay. We're going to move on to the Transportation Committee chaired tonight by Michelle Pappy and Al.
Thank you, President Sands. Welcome back.
Thank you.
So we want to talk first about Rally North America, which I believe is the first time they've come to Athens. They look for historic downtown areas to begin their car rallies. It's a fundraising opportunity, and they are requesting to come to Athens on July 8th and to begin their rally. The street needs to be closed. We're considering 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and it will be closed to all vehicular traffic except for their vehicles. And so they travel around different towns that have historic downtown areas. They look for that. And so I just wanted to bring that forward. We've discussed this a few months back when they approached our city asking to, to be one of their locations for their rally. So we're a piece of the pie or the rally point, basically, is what's going on here. So they have 160 people. I'm not sure how many, many cars that is. Maybe there's two in a car. I don't know how that works, but it should be a pretty interesting event on July 8th. And I don't know if anybody else has any, any other information.
No, that's the same information I have. Somewhere in my mind, I heard about 80 people, which would be the two per...
Okay, about two per car, and they plan on...
The question that the police had this morning, it staffed, was which way are they going? Because if we go down to Carpenter, are they all going left? Are they all going right?
They're all right.
We'll find out.
Yeah, well, those are details we'll get figured out later, but the other big thing is they end up spending, staying, they need about 70-plus hotel rooms, and they purchase meals, you know, so it'll be a, another little tourism event for, for Athens. So we'll bring that up next week in ordinance language.
So Tuesday, July 8th, that's a midweek bump?
It's a midweek event.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll need to put something out prior or the week before for people who come to work. It's between state and Carpenter, so it's not the whole length of Court Street. I imagine they line up Indy-style is what I'm thinking. I don't know.
And go right or left.
Race car style.
On the brakes.
Start your, maybe, maybe the mayor will be at the top of Carpenter. Start your engines. Okay, all right. Any questions on that? All right. Need to talk a little bit about the upcoming street tour, when we'd like to have that, when we think that's a good idea, where we go around. Council does, and anybody else in the community who would like to ride along, and talk about kind of our, our streets, but infrastructure. It ends up being a service safety kind of, a lot of conversation in that tour.
We do have some restrictions, because our city engineer is a National Guardsman, as you know, and so the two weekends I'm proposing would be the 19th or 26th of April.
So those are Saturday mornings?
I think we usually meet out front, I don't know.
What, the weekends again? I'm sorry.
Saturday the 19th or Saturday the 26th?
April.
So you know on the 12th, and I don't even know that Andy would be back by then, there's a lot of pressure on the city on that day. It's Kids Fest, it's a Sandlot Parade, and it's some unnamed number fest out in the county.
And then on the 13th is Beautification Day.
Correct.
So that would not be a good weekend, right? So you would like us to get back to you, the 19th or 26th, whatever. We can maybe let Debbie know, and then she can pool the, what works best. Yes?
Thank you. I just wanted, I know last year I think I had tried to survey council members and mayor's office to see if there was weekday interest, so I don't know if that's something we want to look at as well, too, if there's a possibility of meeting in the morning on a weekday that would also keep you guys from coming in on the weekend. So I'm, I'm open to that, and I guess it's something we can look at and discuss. Not at this point, but we have time.
I can't see everybody's schedule right now, but I could offer possibly Friday, April 18th in the morning. Friday also has some other significant...
That's Good Friday.
Yeah, trying not to say it.
Separation of church and state.
But I can look, and I can email the council clerk with the...
Would the 25th be an option?
It's well ahead, that's why, that one fell in between. But again, we can look at schedules, and I can send out some options. I think it's always traditionally been done on a Saturday to allow for any citizens who may want to, which we've had, right? The boss, media usually attends, so send it out.
Personally, I like weekends.
Works better for my work schedule.
I don't know.
So could we suggest that, could we suggest that council members in particular and citizens even have suggestions of roads that they'd like, streets they'd like to look at?
Any particular concerns, please notify Debbie Walker.
Start making your list and checking it twice.
And on Saturday, April 19th is International Street Fair, but we should be done prior to the proclamation time, but, you know.
Okay.
Getting out of here may be difficult.
I can address for you.
When is graduation in May?
I'm sorry?
The first weekend. First weekend graduation, okay, so that's May 3rd.
Third, is that right?
Third. And then after that, we start working on streets. So we really do need to do this in April.
If you get into May, then, you know, we still have to bid. I guess we could start the process through, but we, we have to identify and kind of have our...
Right.
Number crunching.
Right.
Our engineers' estimates in place, so...
Okay, so folks get back as soon as possible to Debbie and let them know what we're, let her know what works best with your schedule. And if you're considering a Friday, I think right now, are most people looking at Saturday, at least on council?
I can do either. Well, there's a couple Saturdays I have, I have prior engagements.
Yeah. Right, okay.
The 26th, is that what you said?
26th is fine.
Okay.
Sounds like the 26th is...
Sounds like the 26th is sound.
All right. Moving on, I don't think there's any other additional thing. I did want to mention that the Transportation Subcommittee will be meeting at Engineering Public Works on April 1st at 1:00 PM.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to City and Safety Services Committee. Steve Patterson is the chair, but we're going to begin our conversation led by Jennifer Coffrey.
Thank you, President Sands. I had the opportunity last year around this time of year, because I remember hearing spring peepers, to visit the Compost Exchange outside of Athens. And today we have Ray Leird, the founder of the Compost Exchange, visiting us to talk about a pilot project proposal for Curbside Organics Pickup. And the prospect of such a program is exciting to me and many other members of the community, I believe, because here in Athens, we value environmental stewardship and reducing our carbon footprint as much as possible. And this could be a potential way to do that. I know that many of our residents already do composting in the backyard and we have a lot of backyard conservation efforts already going on. But there are many residents, be they students or renters or whatever their circumstances may be, who may not be able to maintain their own compost bin or pile or tumbler, whatever it may be. And so this could be a potential way for our residents to divert more food waste from the waste streams and thus the landfills around us that are growing ever fuller. So I welcome Ray Leird and I understand he has some information and a sample bucket to show to us. Please step up to the podium.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay, how close do you get? About there? Okay. Again, thank you for having me tonight. I know some of the faces, some I don't. But I'm Ray Leird from the Compost Exchange and we've been out there for about a year now, digging in the dirt, as they say. And we're a Class II EPA licensed facility on Poster Road. It's two miles west of the Plains on Poster Road. And people always ask me what the address is. I always tell them, it's just two miles west of the Plains on Poster Road because it's too hard to find and the Google Maps doesn't find us anyway. Anyway, so I'm just here tonight to propose that you consider allowing us to start a pilot project for the collection of organics on Curbside, our pickup. And as my flyer indicates, about 30% of, they estimate 30% of the waste stream is organic recyclables that goes in the trash every week. And we would like to consider starting a pilot project to try and see if the city of Athens, the residents, would like to have that as a full-time, ongoing collection process along with the other recyclables they have now. And so the idea, as your handout indicates, that we would choose some type of, you know, some neighborhood or some east side, west side, or maybe a combination of different neighborhoods as a cross sampling to see if the residents do in fact have a desire to have this start. Once chosen, one of the big challenges in having this work is that a lot of folks don't know why we should do the recycling. They don't know, they're not educated about the process and how important it is. And if you come to the farmer's market, the booth I have there, that's one of the big things that we talk about, is that if you walk by, what is this? And I'll explain, well, here's a flyer that explains why we should consider it, why it's important that we do this function. And so that's a big part of the initial, kind of the handout or the information about what the program might be about, is why we should, and then explain how it might work in the neighborhoods. But once chosen, each, the folks in the neighborhood would be given a handout that explained why we do it and the how it works kind of thing. Basically, it's pretty simple because today, there's recycling in the city and so people are used to bringing their recyclables. And I talked to one lady yesterday, a member of the market, membership market. She said that she puts her, like, seven or six or seven things out there in front of her house, all these bottles and cans and so on and so forth. And that's about ready to change, I understand it. Is the city going to, if everybody knows, is the city going to a kind of a one-size-fits-all, everything goes in one can? Is that what's going to happen? I'm not sure, but that's what I've heard. And but now she puts out all these different bins with things in it. But the idea would be that each resident would be given, what do you, buckets? And inside the bucket, there's a compostable liner that they would simply fill up during the course of the week. They would bring this out with their other recyclables and their trash and they would sit this down. And we would come along, like the trash folks do now, and just simply, you know, take the bucket, you know, take this out, put a new one in, put it back down. It'd be no different than retrieving your other cans that are out there that are empty. And so that's how it would work. The service for this pilot project would be provided at no charge to anybody. It would be, you know, taken care of by our company. And the idea is to, you know, figure out, is there an interest? Is there a need for this in Athens proper? So we would also, as the flyer indicates, we would provide all the insurance we would be needed to cover this kind of a process. I'm sure they're probably not being in that business of collections at this level. There's probably some innovative or unique insurance requirements, you know, that the haulers do have to have, and so we'd take care of that. On the average, one question might be, can we handle the increase in capacity? And yeah, we have, like it says in the bottom note there, we collect about 6,000 pounds now from the market and various restaurants. That list there, that ad there, those are our heroes, the restaurants that we collect from now. So we're used to it. Plus, we get a pretty good size drop every week from a major haul, sometimes 20 tons a week altogether. And that's a pretty good pile of stuff that we have to work with. Questions, on the next page are some questions that might be asked of the process, but you know, one is, one big one I have is, is there a, after doing the study, that will there be an actual cost decrease to the consumer and to the city if we do this? Because the city has to, I guess it's the wasters, they take the trash and they have to go to landfill with what they take. And in that trash are these organic materials. And that's the whole question, because you're already putting it somewhere and you're already paying for it. It's being paid for by the fees collected. And so will this program that we hopefully develop, will it result in actual cost decrease for both the city and for the residents? And that's a question I'm most interested in figuring out. And it's, this has been done before in other towns around the country, not a whole lot yet, but the same kind of a deal that, you know, people always say, oh, it's going to be more hassle, more this, more of that, more. And so I believe in doing a scientific study to make sure that we answer those questions about, you know, is it really an increase in hassle factor? Or is there a number of people who say, hey, it's worth the hassle, if that's what it is, but basically it's just a habit. We're doing stuff with it now. And we just have these habits of, in the past, thrown everything away and then it become, came, you know, acceptable and kind of popular to do cans and cardboard and stuff like that. And now we're going to get into organics and it's going to take a little while, but it's coming. And so, but there are a number of questions on that second page. One has to do with the current haulers. I understand the city would like to keep the number of haulers to a minimum. I don't blame you. Unlike, you know, where I live in the Plains, it's a free-for-all. There's probably 10 different haulers that kind of compete for your business and they're all in place. So I don't blame you for wanting to have it down to, you know, one or two or three. And ideally, I shouldn't be one of them. This should be taken care of, in my opinion, by the current, the folks who do it now. And ideally, they should collect these materials as well and bring them to us and then there also might be a savings because in the industry, the way it works throughout the state, there are major haulers, some come to our facility with the materials. And so the Walmarts of the world, they have to figure out a long time ago that instead of paying 80 bucks a ton to have somebody take it to a landfill, they'll pay somebody 50 a ton to take it away. And they come to us and they pay us a certain fee to take it off their hands. And so there's these margins that are out there. And then it's all about, you know, is there, are there economic benefits to having this thing happen? Never mind the jobs and the better soil and better water and all the different other big picture benefits. Are there some down to, you know, in the home or for the city, economic benefits that are just plain and simple there? So, but again, the questions on that second page, I apologize for not having my glasses. I forgot them on my way out of the house. But that, you know, the haulers are there. Are they going to, I'm not sure if you've heard of, whether they're going to propose the same idea or they're not just sitting in their hands, that they know this is happening around the country, this organic diversion activity. And, you know, I'm a small fry in a big pond, as far as they're concerned. And so, but, you know, I'm interested in having this happen because we're a processor, you know? There are haulers and collectors and processors, and I'm a processor. But, you know, if it's not going to happen until later, I'm for having it happen sooner. So that's why I'm standing up here tonight, trying to get, you know, the guys to be interested and perhaps, you know, answer some basic questions about the interest that this city might have and also how to get them interested. And that gets back again to education. Why should we do this? And I think once people figure out or know why we should, and they're, you know, people are pretty intelligent, that's stupid out there. And then, and I think they care quite a bit about this issue, especially if they can, like I do at the market, and some of you have seen me there explaining this, and it's about offering benefits, design benefits into it. And most folks, that's pretty cool. It isn't that hard. And I get benefits. I get free compost or this or that. You know, if you can divide, design benefits into the process, make it pretty easy, most people will go along with it because it's the right thing to do and they all know it, too.
Well, let's take a moment to open it up to questions from council members.
Yes, sure.
And let folks know that you do have a web page that citizens might visit if they had further questions or want to learn more about the exchange. It's wwwcompostexchange, is that correct?
The Compost.
The Compost Exchange.
Dot com.
Dot com. So, member Pappy?
Thanks. Thanks for coming.
Sure.
Okay, I was listening to everything. Now I forgot my question. So are there any other cities in Ohio that are currently composting? Because one of the things...
You mean Curbside?
Yeah.
Not that I know of. It's for, it's probably, I'm not, and there's the city councils and meetings or city government, but there's a cost involved. And there's also, you know, the politics of it. And most of the food waste composters are in the big cities. And most of those folks are in the industrial composting business. They take industrial waste mostly, the low-hanging fruit.
I see.
I mean, I have a lot of people who come to the market from Columbus, Cincinnati and they'll say, I wish I had this here. I'm going, you know, you could, you know, this idea. And of Curbside, what we do at the market is the next best thing, but Curbside is where it should happen because they're already picking up the other stuff. And it's just a matter of, and I realize that there's an expense to the, on a big scale to do it.
And there are haulers that are doing compost that you know?
Oh, yeah.
In Ohio?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
The food compost, the organic.
They collect from the industrial sector.
So they're not doing residential?
Right. Not that I'm aware of. On the West Coast, they have them mandated.
Portland, there's different companies, different cities.
That's right.
Okay. We always ask this question, is it being done anywhere in Ohio because of the Ohio Revised Code and the different things that go along?
Right.
So you're saying we would be a first?
Pretty much. That's the other idea, is to prove that it's possible, that, hey, look what Athens is doing. You guys, you know, you can do it, too. And, you know, it'll be a learning process, for sure. But because there's a facility here, because we're here, this Class II facility, that's one of the big problems in much of the state. If you look at a map, if this is the map of Ohio, okay? There's the interstate, 71. I'm it. Literally, this whole...
Southeast Ohio. Well, even eastern Ohio, it sounds like.
There's only, there's one over here and me, and over that side, there's nobody. And they're all but down 71 because that's where the, all the industry, industry, that's where the waste is. And so it's low-hanging fruit. And eventually, you know, it'll happen and it's just a matter of time.
Who do you sell your compost to?
Oh, landscapers or members or somebody come by today. It's a matter of, you know, people want this stuff. They'll, I really haven't done a whole lot of work with that yet, the marketing, but, not too worried about that.
Member Nisley also had a question?
Just a few more questions.
Yes.
I think as a comment, it would be wonderful, I think we were the first, weren't we the first city in the state to have Curbside recycling? So, I don't know. But this is an interesting idea. A couple of comments or questions about what would be required in terms of data gathering? Because you're doing this as a, can it save people money or, you know, the city money? And I noticed that you'll have residents complete an online questionnaire. So it'll be kind of a self-reported information on how much they might have reduced their amount of garbage that they're putting out.
There's a version, right?
And then, second question, would there be anything that the city would be required to do in terms of data gathering or information?
I'm not real sure about that, but the general idea would be to, you know, kind of sign them up. And so we would have this connection to them. It wouldn't be just like, you know, they would just randomly go and if they felt like it, do the questionnaire. I would kind of, you know, I would hope that they would be, have, take it seriously enough, if they did sign up, that they would, you know, at the end, I would contact them about, you know, if they hadn't done the questionnaire, to have them fill it out, yeah? And then to share that with everybody, of course. And, but the need is to indicate that we're a processor and collectors collect. And ideally, the folks who collect now should do the collecting and bring it to, because we're so close, we're just right here to take advantage of the fact that we're here. And most communities don't have that at all. That's the reason why they don't do it. The transportation, the freight expense of moving it around is, prohibits even the thought of developing an idea like this. That's really a kicker.
Member Butler also had a question?
Unless, unless member Nisley had a few more questions.
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ray, for your presentation. I wanted to share a few things. A, I have been approached by members on the West Side and the ward that I represent who have expressed interest in Curbside compost recycling and this collection and applaud or would want to participate in the pilot project. So I think that's reassuring or good to hear.
Sure.
And I had a question regarding the pilot program. My understanding from your presentation is that your office, your group would still be doing the collection, correct, for this pilot program?
For the eight or 12 weeks, yes. That's right.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. And I wanted to share on a side note, I do hope that we can move forward this way. And I appreciate member Nisley's reference to recycling. I believe it was former council member Nancy Bane that was instrumental in bringing Curbside recycling to the city of Athens. And upon my travels this summer, when I was visiting my sister and then on a side trip to San Francisco, I took a photograph of some recycling bins and compost bins that were in the city of San Francisco. And I shot one of them over to the mayor and I sent it also to a former council member. And I shot one of them over to the mayor and I sent it also to former council member Nancy Bane. And I, so I think that if it's happening in other communities, I think that we can do it here. It's not rocket science. I think it's very doable.
Right.
And so I want to express my support in moving forward with this pilot program and then collecting the data, seeing what we can garner from that information, and then hopefully moving forward as a community. Thank you.
Okay.
And member Patterson?
I just had a couple of questions about the pilot program and then ultimately whatever might happen in the future. How critter-proof is that bucket? Is one of my questions.
Oh, this here?
Yeah.
Since I started doing this, well, I get the buckets from what we call the Bucket Santas, restaurants that get pickles in these. And I soak the label off, put our label on, as our Bucket Santas. The lid I buy. And I've had some lids come back gnawed by probably raccoons, and they still can't get in it.
Okay.
They just don't. It's a really good lid. I got real lucky to find this one. No kidding. It's a Letta Company. It doesn't crack. The other one I had, the first one, was brittle and it cracked. Bunches. This never cracks.
Sometimes they chew holes through the center.
Never had that.
That's good.
But they do attempt to, you know, they have a very intense smell, as we all know. It just doesn't, doesn't get, they can't get in.
The other question I had is, is, you know, the potential for reducing, you know, the waste that's going in landfills. And so therefore, are you weighing and monitoring how much you're actually keeping from going in landfills through the pilot program?
Don't have a scale, but on the average, I guess like the notes say, that full's about 25 pounds. And that's how, that's how we measure the, what we, EPA is, how much you got. Twenty-five pounds is what a full bucket typically, unless you have a lot of tomatoes or, you know, some of, it's like, whoa! You get a bucket, it's like 40, 50 pounds. Most of them are about 25 pounds. That's what the industry kind of says is the average for a family of four that eats most of their meals at home. It's about, you know, a bucket's full. It's about 25 pounds, 20, 25 pounds. Yeah.
That'd be a nice metric to have, if you did have actual weight, so you can-
Right.
Use that within your city. Thank you.
Okay, yes. Last one?
President Sands? Question. If we go ahead and approve this-
Yes.
-this pilot program, and you're going to run it for-
Eight to 12.
Eight to 12 weeks.
Right.
Then I'm guessing that you're going to come back to us and say-
Yes.
Here's my results.
Right. I thought I'd do it-
What do you think that timeframe would be?
May, June. May and June, maybe July, maybe 10 weeks. But I thought I'd contact some folks, OU marketing people, to work up a questionnaire, get some experience doing that and, you know. But, yeah, be glad to come back in August and maybe roll out in the fall. Usually fall is a good time because people kind of change their habits and, you know, get in that-
Yeah.
-that whole cooking and, you know, stuff.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
Thank you for coming in, Ray. And I would encourage, oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor?
A couple things, of course, is, in terms of measuring and metrics, what would be successful and not successful?
Yeah.
That's a criteria that'd be worth looking at. We also, I think I mentioned at the farmers market, which is where we see each other the most-
Yes.
-is to touch base with the Environment and Sustainability Commission we have, just so they could look at it and maybe they have some, a different perspective, since that seems to be their forte.
You gave me the name-
Yes. Contact Paul Logue is our liaison with the city with that group.
Right.
And I think their next meeting is April 2nd, I think. Usually it's at 5:30 or 5:00. I can get that information, but Paul Logue can do that for you. Mostly because, again, you're trying to design a pilot program of what this will do and how this will work. So the idea is to find out if it will and what it looks like when it does and what it looks like when it doesn't.
Right.
Okay, that's my concern at this point. I mean, I myself compost myself, so therefore I have no need for a bucket like that. And I'm sure some of you compost as well. But you're right, there are a lot of people who can't or don't. We are having discussions, of course, trying to convert our recyclables to a single stream. As a pilot program, I suspect there's no real change that needs to be done on the law. But if you look at Chapter Five, I think it is, the garbage and rubbish, some things would have to change on that. So there would be requirement of legislative changes if we decide to go into anything more extensive than a pilot program. And these are just, I'm just bringing up the things I've thought about in the past couple of weeks.
Currently, it's the solid waste district that does recycling. They're the collectors.
Yes.
Athens Hawking Recycling Center.
Exactly.
A nonprofit.
Yeah. And so wouldn't they be the ones to approach, if it was successful, if people did want to do it, to have them be the ones that would do the collecting ultimately?
Possibly, but realize if I, realize if I'm composting myself, why would I want to be charged for something I'm not doing?
You wouldn't. That's right.
And then we always have a baseline fee for one bag, and therefore, do we reduce it for somebody who's-
Yeah, yeah.
-you know, a five-gallon bucket versus a 30-gallon bag?
Right.
That's one-sixth of it, too.
You mentioned before the need for possibly, you know, do you have these two haulers now that are licensed?
I think we have three franchised and nonprofit right now.
Yeah. And so that's where the law comes in, to change that to four or a different category, new category.
Yes.
Right.
As well as just actually looking. Compost is actually an exception within, you know, you can have your backyard composting there.
Sure.
But once it, in terms of solid waste recyclables, which this is considered recyclable on some level-
Right.
-we probably have to look at that and define it a little bit better.
Okay. And so what's the next step for the city council to, you have to vote, approve, you'll let me know? How does that work?
I would suggest go first to the Environment Health and Sustainability Commission, and we'll get their recommendations and then shoot it to council.
Okay.
I don't know if it needs any action, to tell you the truth.
That's what I was wondering as well. Does city council actually need to approve a pilot program as opposed to what would be a full-fledged program that would come out of a pilot program?
But that's it. You want to say, okay, what does that look like and what do you think will happen when that happens?
Sure.
I mean, you'll have to actually be out there getting, you know, designate an area, a neighborhood, and then a process of how you go about doing it, as well as the feedback that you expect to get and the metrics.
And who would be a good person or group to approach as far as which neighborhoods might want to be the ones?
Well, there's the rub. You've already heard that the west side is interested. We know people on the far east side, and we know people are doing it on the south side. And how do you do that if you don't offer it as a pilot?
There are, I see the wards. There are three wards, and you guys represent certain-
Four wards.
Four wards, okay. And you represent certain neighborhoods, geographic lines, right?
Right.
So maybe I could tap, you know, tap into, I think the best thing to do would be to do a sampling, do 100 families, 100 households, but have it across the city. That's my thought.
Good idea.
Right now, you probably have a set of customers within the city. I know, because I watch the buckets come in and out at the farmers market.
Yeah.
Probably the best place for you to start looking is mapping those and finding out where the highest density is.
Sure.
As a primary location. And if you want to do another ward or another location, you know, build up a map and say, okay, this is how many, get to the first 100, and if you have to jump somewhere else, then contact the wards. They're easy to find and easy to follow.
Are some of the wards more student or apartment focused or concentrated?
The third ward. Has a lot of apartments. That's most in Court Street.
Over on Richland, there's all these big complexes, right?
South side is the biggest.
South side has the biggest concentration.
Oh, okay.
10% of the city's population.
Because I've been approached by them, and I've also approached them, to try and have a drop center, just for those, each complex.
Ray, I think it would be really important, the mayor suggested the sustainability committee-
Oh, yeah.
...and having them kind of flesh through some of these ideas with you and brainstorm. And I would like to see that group send us back a-
Report.
A report.
Yes.
Obviously, we come with them, but I would like, we haven't yet had a sustainability report that I know of, and I think this would be a great place to start.
Okay. I'll do that.
But, yeah.
I want to echo what member Pappy was saying. I think that it might be good for member Cochran to also sit on that and to kind of flesh out that whole idea in terms of neighborhoods and so on and so forth. I mean, that's a whole conversation that needs to take place, I think, with the Sustainability Commission to figure that one out.
Okay.
And I like that idea of kind of polling who you're getting, who's bringing it to you-
Now.
-at the market now, because that, you may have your sampling already across the city. Obviously, you want to reach out with more, but I know some of my neighbors do that.
Sorry, if people do have questions or comments about the potential pilot program, they can feel free to contact their council member-
Absolutely.
-with their questions or comments. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ray.
Thanks for having me. And Steve Patterson, you had some things to add?
We have a couple items under miscellaneous. The-
Can I actually copy this?
Police station needs some flooring improvements in several different locations. The break room is in need of some tile repairs. The briefing room, the dispatch floor area, dispatch area flooring. And the second floor men's and ladies' restrooms need some repairs. So that's one of the items that'll be coming up next week. Along with that, as you're all aware, the renovations are probably right around the corner for 458 Richland Avenue. And along with that, with the renovations taking place, the garage is going to be needed for being able to do some of the kitchen upgrades or renovations. Therefore, there's a need of purchasing a storage shed to go behind that property to move that, what's in there right now. The other thing, I want to, I have a couple of updates that I want to bring everybody abreast of, unless there's questions surrounding those.
I just have one question.
Yes.
On the police station, that's not part of the regular budget, so you're asking for things above and beyond, is that?
Yes. Yeah, it's about $5,500 looking at for the flooring.
And I think we only usually budget about $3,000 in the law administration building funds, so it exceeds what we have.
Okay.
And we assume the Auditor and Finance and Personnel Committee will work towards-
So it'll be an appropriation ordinance coming through. The second item, again, is more informational. City council will be doing an armory walkthrough at 6:00 PM, Monday, April 7th, coming up for those who want to take a look at the armory. There's been some low-level meetings that have been going on with just looking at the armory, looking at what repairs might need to be made. And so that's coming up. That'll be before council on April 7th. And the other informational date that I want to throw out there is April 3rd is going to be the safety tour, J-PAC's safety tour. We're looking for inputs as to areas throughout the city that we can put on our driving list. I think this is kind of the night of announcing tours.
Are you going to be going at night as well?
At 7:30, it'll be starting to get dark, and as we're driving around, so what we did last year in 2012, we didn't have a safety tour in 2013. But 2012, what we did is we started out, it was light, so we were able to see some of the crosswalks, things that we actually need to have eyes on, and then it became dark and we went around and saw the areas that were of safety concern. So that'll be coming up as well. Again, we encourage the community to come out and post, or to let us know about intersections, sidewalks, stairwells, stairways, whatever, that we will try to tour on the safety tour. Other than that, if there's any questions or is there any questions? That's all we have. Number Ray?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on something I mentioned two weeks ago. Council was the citizens' warning, some police statistics on the city website. Is anything moving on that?
We've had a conversation, and I continue to have them with the chief. As it stands now, we can't, what they're taking is taking the data and creating a spreadsheet. We'd have to essentially hire another additional person to make that the way that the neighborhood associations are sending it out. So we're still discussing how we get the data out to the general public, so.
All right. Just want to make sure the public was aware that progress is being made.
Essentially, we have call for services, as you're aware of that. The neighborhood association have put that out there. I think we're up to 2,500 right now as of last week, this past week. So you can see there's a lot of data to sit there and say, okay, we're going to parse it, we're going to redact certain parts of it, and we're going to, at the same time, put addresses to it. So it's kind of a difficult thing to say one way or the other. I mean, you know, I usually get a weekly report, but again, it's all condensed, it doesn't have locations or quadrants or sectors or wards. It's just a tabulation. So, and I know the neighborhood association has been getting that as a text file and dropping it into an Excel spreadsheet, but even they are not sure what they want to keep in the loop or not.
I do have one more item that I wanted to bring up, and this largely because I know that this has been getting some press lately. The Joint Police Advisory Council Subcommittee in looking at social hosting has had two meetings so far, and we plan on having further meetings. At least this academic year, we do have two student representatives, one from the Student Senate and one from the Graduate Student Senate, who sit on the Subcommittee, along